You're watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 22 meeting of the LaPorte County Election Board Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county dot org.
We're going to call this meeting to order, LaPorte County Election Board, March 22, 2024. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Teresa Massa.
Present.
Heather Stevens.
Present.
And Brody Schochner, I am present. Did we have notice for this hearing?
We did.
And was the agenda posted?
It was.
Okay, and we do have a quorum. Any corrections to the agenda?
I'd like to add a couple of things. Under new business. Is that better?
Is it on?
It's on. Okay. Under new business, I would like to add a discussion about paper ballots being used at the polls. A conversation about 16, 17 year olds working as poll workers. And another conversation about opposed candidates for precinct committeemen and delegate working. Working along with also under new business, I would like to add the approval of the mobile voting schedule as it stands so far.
Is there a second?
A second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Any other corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes?
Those minutes would be from the February 23 meeting that we did not approve last month. They were very, very long.
I have one regarding the statement that you made.
Those are the ones. Yeah, go ahead. Any corrections to those minutes?
I would like to ask if you, since you made the statement, if you want to review. Because I think it was. It was in a different context. If you're okay with that, I'm fine with it, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. So no motion or correct?
None.
Okay. Any other corrections? Hearing none, the minutes for the what, what day?
February 23rd.
February 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes are approved. It's now time for public comment.
Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Deborah Burkholz. I'm a resident of the county. I have been a poll worker for about 17 years now. Currently am working the early voting. I had some questions or comments about some of the things that have been told to us. Most of all, the early voters, most of the people who come in have been coming into early vote. They're the same people year after year after year. And we've gotten to know them and they feel comfortable with us. Our concerns are the areas that we are working in, being isolated and maybe unsafe. We have been asked if we would be willing to work late hours on Wednesday, which we said we would. But it gives me some concern about where we will be working and the hours that we will be working till 8 o'clock at night. Well, it will be dark when we come out of the polling place. And I believe most of the workers are women. And I worry about the security of these women going to their cars in the dark. Personally, I think working 12 to 6 would be a better option only because I don't think we'll have very many voters coming out at 7 or 8 o'clock at night. I think people might come on their way home from work. But once they get home, they're unlikely to come back out again to vote. Likewise, we have worked 8 to 3 on Saturdays, the two Saturdays preceding the election. We have found that most of the time, we don't get any voters after 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So we generally sit there for two hours with no voters. And my suggestion would be that perhaps you consider having us work 8 to 1. To save the county some money and I think the voters. That's the general time that they come in, 8 to 1 on Saturdays. Seeing that this is a presidential election, I'm not so concerned about the primary, but the general election itself. Last general election, we saw hundreds, thousands of voters come in waiting in line for two hours or more. We had a problem with getting a way to go to the restroom or even to eat our lunch without eating in front of people that were coming in and voting. So I'd like for you to consider about how our lunch hours would be, how we would be relieved for our lunch hours ahead of time so that we're not trying to compensate at the last minute. So those are some of the ideas that we had that we wanted you to think about and consider.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Coraline. I live at 386 Evanston Road. And I've been around long enough to know when people used to have to be 21 in order to register to vote. So I've been around a long time, okay? I just heard the young lady remark with regard to the hours being a little different on those two Saturdays. I think the state has a rule of how many hours you have to be open on those two Saturdays. I'm not sure. Things do change with time. The other thing is I heard my clerk say something with regard to people who are not, that are not contested in the primary when it came to people that were running for. What are they running for?
A state convention delegate and precinct committeeman.
Yes.
However, it's those who are contested.
Oh, all right, because I was going to say everybody will be contested when it comes to delegate. Because we're divided into several sections and I wasn't sure about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And for the record, we have no one on Zoom. All right, hearing non-public comment is now closed.
Touch on a couple of things because I definitely want to listen to those who are out there working. I mean, we, you know, we do, we do our jobs up here, but they're the ones out there with the voters. And if there are, I can understand the 8 o'clock issue. I understand, I understand the issues there. I understand your concerns. And I think I would leave it up to this board if you guys would like to revisit those hours that that is still. We have not amended that vote center plan just yet. Obviously, we, we don't feel that everybody can, can make it to early voting by 4:00 PM, which is why we want it a later evening. I don't know that it needs to be until 8:00 PM. If it does, I am happy to reach out to our sheriff's department to see about getting everybody an escort to their vehicle in the evening on Wednesdays. But as far as these Saturdays go, we are required by state law to be open for seven hours, the last two Saturdays before any election.
Moving on to new business. The public test will be April 1st, 2024 at 10:00 AM in the elections room at the courthouse, which is 813 Lincoln Way. Any, any further on that?
Nothing further. I just wanted to make sure that we said it out loud.
Okay. I'll just go down the line. So paper ballots, issue of paper ballots, do you want to touch on that?
Yes, every year we end up, when we come in to certify the election and to handle the provisional ballots, we have a handful from people, we have provisional ballots just simply because people didn't want to vote on the machines that they, that they were, you know, they were paper ballot only. And I did reach out to Brad King at the Indiana Election Division along with the attorney. And I did, I did receive something back from, from Mr. King. And he says it's not, it's not allowed. So if you are, if you are voting on election day, you are voting on the machines. If not, I would, I would urge you to, to request an absentee by mail application and vote that way. But aside from that, our voting is, is on the machines.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
Sure. Moving on to 16 to 17 year olds as poll workers.
I think the state has decided that the 16 and 17 year olds are welcome to work. I'm so used to this board always just approving it. So I just thought we'll, you know, we'll cover our rear ends and approve it anyway if that's all right with you guys. So I would make a motion for the 16 and 17 year olds to be used as poll workers.
Is there?
For May 7th.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second for the purposes of discussion. I'm, I'm new to this idea. I'd like to hear more about how it's worked or if it's even been necessary in this county in the past.
It was necessary for a couple of years. I don't know that it's necessary now. But I can tell you what we have found with the 16 and 17 year olds. They are so excited to do this. It's a, it's a free day out of school. They get paid and they learn so much. I don't believe that we have ever had a student, a 16 or 17 year old, call off ever. They, they don't just not show up. They've, they've been wonderful. So I know Kristen and Angie out there, they're the ones that are finding these poll workers. And it has been very successful.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Okay, opposed candidates for precinct delegates.
So my, my question is, do we want to extend that from? We, we stated that they, that the opposed candidates for precinct committeeman or delegate could work on election day. Could we extend that to early voting, absentee voting? I mean, if they can work, they can work. Or is it specific to May 7th?
We had a prior resolution that we voted on, is that right? And that was strictly for, was it limited to election day?
Well, I think we just said that they could work as poll workers. But I don't know that we specified a day.
Do we have a copy of that resolution?
I'll be happy to find one.
Yeah, it was just this year because.
Yeah.
I don't remember which meeting, but.
Yeah. I, I would like to see it open to, if, if they can work, they can work. So I would, I would make that motion and then if that, if that is what, if the resolution specified the day, I would be happy to amend that resolution.
I, I would agree.
Okay.
So I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Approval of mobile voting unit?
Do you want to? Francine was wonderful enough to contact all of these people that she's been, she's been talking to for the last couple of years to make sure that that mobile unit is out there.
So is there a motion?
I move for approval of the mobile unit schedule for primary election with thanks to Francine.
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Francine.
And this will be posted on our website, correct?
It'll be posted on the website, published in the newspaper. We'll get it wherever we can get it. The Access LaPorte County is wonderful about helping us. The League of Women Voters is wonderful about spreading the word. So we'll, we'll get it out there.
Okay. I suppose I, suppose I could read it for the 10 people that watch these hearings.
Okay.
Tuesday, April 9th in LaPorte, Maple City Square at 12:04 Andrew Ave and Carriage House, 1700 Andrew Ave. I guess I should specify the time. Maple City Square, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Carriage House, 12:30 to 3:00 PM. Wednesday, April 10th in LaPorte, Al's East Grocery, 702 East Lincoln Way from 9:00 to noon. And then Cambridge Square, 1111 Drive. Missing the address. 12:30 to 3:00 PM. Tuesday, April 16th in Michigan City, New Creation Church, 9009 West Paz Road, 9:00 to noon. And then Simeon Square, 12:30 to 3:00 on South Woodland Ave. Wednesday, April 17th, JB Grocery at 430 Greaton Road, Kingsford Heights from 9:00 to noon. And then Fish Lake Library, 7981 State Road 4 in Walkerton from 12:30 to 3:00 PM. Thursday, April 18th, Michigan City, Senior Center, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Washington Park. Tuesday, April 23rd in Michigan City, New Creation Church from 9:00 to noon and Simeon Square from 12:30 to 3:00 PM. Wednesday, April 24th at Cambridge Square from 9:00 to noon and Al's East Grocery from 12:30 to 3:00 PM. April 25th, Rolling Prairie Library at 1 East Michigan Street, 9:00 to noon. And Hudson Monroe Crossing, 7038 North Chicago Trail in New Carlisle from 12:30 to 3:00 PM. April 26th, that is a Friday, at Al's Grocery, 3535 South Franklin Street from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. April 27th, Saturday, Al's Grocery, 1002 North Carwick Road, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Monday, April 29th, Salvation Army, 3240 Monroe Street, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Tuesday, April 30th, Maple City Square, 9:00 to noon. And then Carriage House, 12:30 to 3:00 PM. May 1st, which is a Wednesday, JB Grocery, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then Fish Lake Public Library, 12:30 to 3:00 PM. Thursday, May 2nd, at the Michigan City Senior Center at Washington Park, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Friday, May 3rd, Westville Town Hall, 100 Sester Drive, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I might as well specify that these times are all in Central.
Heather, can I ask how this is going to be publicized to the voters?
This, this mobile unit?
Yes.
It will be printed in the paper.
Okay.
As many papers as I can find that are local. I think, I think we have three, two or three. We'll put it on the county website. We can't usually fit the whole thing on at once. So we do it by a week, a week to week basis. And just so everybody is aware, if, if the mobile unit is in Michigan City at an apartment.
Microphone's off.
Oh. If the mobile unit is in Michigan City at an apartment complex, somebody from Fish Lake that happens to see it, go use it if you want to use it. It's not just for that location. It's, it's wide open. So that's for everybody.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. Moving on to old business.
I'm sorry, did we not deal with the training issue?
We can.
Yeah, might as well. There has been a request for Zoom or Google Meet election work training. I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, so, and I understand that, you know, it's kind of a bummer to come up here and hear the same things that you hear year after year. But a lot of our equipment is still very new to people. And if you have been in the clerk's office on the morning of the election, you know that everybody forgets what they're doing. 5 o'clock in the morning, that phone is ringing because nobody remembers how to set up the machines, the poll books. They, they just forget. Now, the state, the state does require that inspectors attend the training. That is a requirement. This board in the past has required that everybody attend the training. So while I'm happy to put it out there, you know, we can, we can send some stuff out. But I think that that training is super important because those polls have to be up and running by 6:00 AM. So when you get there at 5:00 and you've forgotten it all because you haven't touched a machine in eight months, it's a problem.
Is there a history of recording the training and then maybe allowing that as a resource?
There's not because we don't have a way of making sure that everybody uses that resource.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. Just as a supplement, say they attend the training and then they're given a link to a YouTube link that they can refresh their memory so that, I mean, you're right. As soon as the polls open, we get bombarded with phone calls. So.
That hour is madness.
I'd like to see it recorded and possibly published so that we can refer back to it.
I'm happy to do that. Are you guys going to come here and record this with me?
Sure.
Well, is that something that ALCO can do like they do the voter?
I'm positive. I can reach out to Drew.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, I would love that.
This is something we've talked about doing for a couple of years. I just didn't have board members willing to jump in and, and say, yes, let's do it.
I think, you know, even me, I would watch it a couple of times just so that when the phones pop off on that day, I can jog my memory as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would like that.
So I would say in the meantime, we, we continue as we have. And what I will do, because I, I live in South County and it was, it was a South County person that, that sent this in. I, I know what that drive is like and it's, it's not fun. But what I, what I am willing to do is find a location in South County where we could do a training one evening.
There you go.
So the South County people can come on to the South County. We do a couple, we do a full day in Michigan City. So Michigan City people can just pop into Michigan City and let me go east this time.
Okay.
So I'll find a location to go east and we'll do a training out there.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. Early voting locations for the 2024 primary elections.
Okay, due to the flood that happened in this building, early voting, we have not had the use of the county complex. And we have not had use of the, the office space on 8th Street in Michigan City that we used to have. We have been in basically a lobby. We can't fit many machines in order for our workers to use the restroom facilities. They have to go to a different office. It, it's not ideal. And at the time of our last meeting, we did not have permission to use it. So Teresa was amazing and she sent me a text one day. She said, hey, let's go look at this place. I went to the wrong location, but then she, she got me to the right one. But the Hope Center has offered, has offered us space. And we also have permission to use 8th Street. So this time we have an option, which almost never happens around here. And I see pros and cons to both. I, I think that the facility at Hope Street was fantastic. It's basically, it's an old school, isn't it?
It's an old elementary school and they're offering us a full size classroom to use that has all windows on one side. It's, it had about eight round banquet tables set up and we can change that configuration. It's got a little counter. It's got a sink. Heather was talking about where she would put the cure egg for the workers. And it's, it's a wonderful community center that I never knew about. And I guess I haven't lived in this area long enough and I see some people nodding out here. They have activities. Kids come in late in the afternoon. They have, it's a wonderful community center with, with a multipurpose gym and stage. They have performances. They have events that 200 people show up to sometimes. It's beautifully decorated. It was very clean. It's accessible. And the director was lovely and I, I think she would really work with us. We talked about how we can have signage, maybe even along Route 12. It's right by the big Nippsco cooling tower. So that's a great landmark. And I think we can get the word out so that people who are used to 8th and Wabash will just, you know, it's like a half a mile from there. It's very close.
It wasn't that far. My, my other concerns with the facility, and again, it is, it is a wonderful, wonderful building. There are, there are a lot of events there for the kids. So are we going to end up in a situation that we had been in before? Where we end up in the evenings, once those students are in there, where there's, there's security in uniform? That's my biggest concern.
I'm not aware that they have. We, we met the, the gentleman who's the facility director, I think, Michael.
Yeah.
And I didn't get a sense that he walks around in a uniform.
Okay, okay. That, that was my biggest concern because for many, many years, that, that was a hot, hot issue at, at the schools.
Yeah.
And so that, that was just kind of where I was a little leery to, even though it's no longer a school, I, I know with the student activities there in the evenings, it just.
It just raised a little. It would only be four evenings, right, that were there?
I'm sorry.
Four Wednesdays would only be the later hours. So the rest of the time.
Yes.
I don't think the students would be there before we close up at 4:00.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I, I feel like everyone's used to 8th and Wabash, but it's not ideal. Could we get them used to this? I.
I think the primary is a great way to try it out. And if it doesn't work, we can switch it out again.
I agree with that.
I just need a motion.
I move that the early voting site for Michigan City be at the Hope, Hope Center on 222 McClellan, McClelland Street in Michigan City.
I'll second your motion.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? We kind of already had it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. So we need to approve these today, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Hope Center for Michigan City, LaPorte State Street Church, the old Cool Spring Library?
No.
Oh, okay.
The State Street Church is wrong too, right? That's a, these are, these are the old ones.
On, what we're looking at is what the vote plan, what the vote center plan says now. And in order to amend, because some of these have to change, that's, that's what we're here to do.
Okay.
So the State Street Church was a vote center or a voting location. It was a vote center last year too. But it was also for early voting and it was right down the road. Nate Laux was amazing enough to offer that up to us. Unfortunately, it is unavailable this year. But he has offered us 210 Brighton Street. And that, that facility, again, it's not far from here, maybe eight blocks. It's wonderful. It is newly, newly remodeled. Everything's been renovated. It's ADA compliant, plenty of parking, and it's a busy intersection. So I, I think that it'll be really good.
Okay.
For the voters.
What about Cool Spring?
Cool Spring, that building is shot.
Right.
It is shot. It is just, I am not comfortable putting anybody in there. And again, if we have early voting in LaPorte and we have early voting in Michigan City, I'm not sold that we need one in between LaPorte and Michigan City. I think we need to go east because otherwise we're just, we're only servicing part of the county. The Will Township Community Building has made themselves available to us for the entire month. And again, it is ADA compliant, plenty of parking. And it gives, it gives the voters an opportunity toward the east part of the county to get out and vote early.
Okay. And Wantagh?
Do you have the address on that?
I do. It is 6981 East, 350 North. It's actually a Rolling Prairie address.
And Wantagh?
Wantagh, the town hall is available for us.
Okay, so keep that one. All right. So can I have a motion to approve the Hope Center? Any corrections before I read these?
No.
Okay. The Hope Center at 222 McClelland in Michigan City, 210 Brighton Street in LaPorte, Will's Township Community Building at 6981 East 350 North in Rolling Prairie and Wantagh Town Hall at 104 North Main Street in Wantagh to be the early voting locations.
I'll make the motion, but I think Teresa wants to look at it real quick.
I just want to double, double check that.
Sure.
And it strikes me that we're going to have to educate the voters about all these changes, not just the Michigan City ones.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't see it right now. So I'll trust my memory. We'll fix it if we need to.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that vote is unanimous. Okay.
And I, and I should say that Mayor Angie and. And, and I should say that Mayor Angie in Michigan City is the one who said, what about the Hope Center? So give her credit.
I did reach out to the mayor of Michigan City. We were looking at the use of City Hall up there, and I completely understand her reservations about using it. I get it. But, but she was great to work with, and she helped us secure a location, so that's, that's awesome.
Okay, so next order of business is the vote center locations for the twenty twenty four primary elections.
Let me run down, tell you what's good.
Yes, please. I guess just tell me what's bad.
Yeah, you just want to know what's bad?
Just what's bad.
Okay, State Street Church.
Which page are we on, please?
Page two.
Page two.
So the State Street Church at two oh nine State Street will be changed to the two ten Brighton.
Great.
Southwood Emanuel Church. There were some little hiccups there last year, so we've actually opted not to go back. We did find a location. It was very important to me to find a location right there, because there are so many apartment complexes. And I was very nervous that transportation was an issue in that neighborhood. But, so I contacted one of the apartment complexes. It is the Wexford Apartments, but they were wonderful.
Wexford?
Wexford, W E X F O R D. I spoke with April there. They, they are ready for us. They have a small community, not even very small. They have a nice community building, ADA compliant, there's room for parking, and they are welcoming us for May seventh. So that address is one oh three Grayson Drive, and again, it's right there where all of those apartment complexes are.
I'm sorry, did you say Grayson?
Yes.
In Mich, in Michigan City.
Correct. And that was it.
Okay.
So.
I'm gonna go out of order here. Any discussion on this, these locations?
Did we lose a Hudson Lake?
Not to my knowledge.
I was thinking there was a Hudson Lake site before.
Should be on this.
In Rolling?
Where is Hudson?
On the old plan.
We do. It's not on here. I don't know why, but we can amend this. We do have Monroe Crossing. Oh, it says New Carlyle. So we just need to change that to Hudson.
Great, thank you for clearing that up.
Any other corrections? This is the one from last year, isn't it? Or no?
Those were the locations. That's what's in the vote center plan.
Okay, okay. So we just need to essentially do a motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay. So any other corrections before we do that?
As far as location, no.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to amend State Street Church to two ten Brighton Street in Laporte?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Can I have a motion to amend Southwood Emanuel Church to Wexford Apartments at one oh three Grayson Drive, Michigan City?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Can I have a motion to amend the word New Carlyle to Hudson Lake?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Okay, so. Is there anything further that we need to do?
Are there other, Heather, are there other amendments needed in the plan that you're aware of?
No, not that I'm aware of.
There, there were some pagination issues. I know that's just a, that's a formatting thing. Okay, so paragraph three is the early voting sites. Okay.
So where else is that?
Where else is that? So do we need formal motion to, I guess we just give it an end of plan for those areas. Okay.
Okay. Any other old business? There's none on the agenda. So board member comments. Teresa, would you like to start?
Well, I think we have a great start to expand voting with four early voting sites instead of just the two. And I think we're gonna need it this year. So hopefully, the budget will expand as needed. You'll know how to take care of that, Heather. Thanks for everybody for coming out today.
Thank you. Just, it's been great. It's, I've got, you know, I don't feel like I'm doing this by myself. I, I think we have a really good team here, and it's refreshing. Go ahead, Brody.
Okay. So I feel like I say this every time, we're really looking forward to the primary and get out there and vote. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.